Session and we are ready to begin. I believe we're starting with presentations.
Good afternoon. My name is Jane Lecanche. I'm the co-owner of 401 Mars Way with my husband Jeremy, and I'm a resident of Juno Beach. I'm representing a group of Mars Way residents and we're here today to present our safety concerns and options to help alleviate these issues. Mars Way is a residential street with seventeen homes. It's a very narrow road, which is twenty feet wide, and each traffic lane is nine point, nine feet, two inches between the striping. The road was not designed for the amount and size of vehicles that use the street. It cannot safely accommodate large trucks, the quantity of traffic, pedestrians and bicyclists using the street as a sidewalk to get to Ocean Drive or to US One. A 2020 traffic study showed seven hundred and twenty-seven vehicles a day traveling on the street during the week, compared to Olympus at three hundred and eighty-two, which is wider at twenty-four feet and also has a sidewalk and far fewer residents. We believe the quantity of traffic has also increased since 2020, with the significant growth in the population of Palm Beach County. The FDOT standard for a two-way roadway is a minimum of a twelve-foot travel lane. The striping and parked vehicles make the Mars Way travel lane even more narrow, more than three feet less than the twelve-foot standard. As a point of reference, Neptune is twenty-three feet, six inches. Olympus is twenty-four feet. North Juno Lane is twenty-three feet, six inches. Apollo is twenty-one feet, eight inches. In Saturn Lane, where we used to live, a private river rock road is twenty feet, the same size as Mars Way, and which is now a major thoroughfare. All these streets do not have the quantity of traffic or the type of traffic that Mars Way is confronted with on a daily basis. In addition to the narrowness, the road has an incline, which creates line-of-sight issues on this, both ends of the street. Drivers cannot adequately see what they are about to encounter, such as pedestrians, bicyclists, and other vehicles, until they hit the crest of the road. These pictures were taken at both ends of the street. You're not able to see after the crest of the hill from your vehicle. The incline presents a barrier to safety because the incline interjects a period of time where the driver of any vehicle cannot adequately see what they're about to encounter until they get close to the apex of the incline. This is an accident waiting to happen. The other concern we have is pedestrian safety. Residents and visitors have to use the street as their sidewalk in order to get to Ocean Drive, the beach, or US One. The top picture shows residents scrambling to get out of the way of a turning car entering Mars Way from ocean. The narrow, busy, two-way street with no sidewalks and large trucks using the street makes this a very dangerous situation for residents, visitors, their children, their grandchildren, and dogs walking the street. Here are more pictures of pedestrians traversing the street, competing with vehicles and parked cars for safe passage. Would it be acceptable for citizens to walk along Ocean Drive without sidewalks and a lot of traffic? I believe the answer is no. And here's more pictures. The next issue I'd like to address is trucks on the street. Town adopted a no-truck ordinance for Mars Way a few years ago. This hasn't helped at all. There are large trucks constantly driving on the street. Truck drivers also park on the street to make delivery to other streets, such as the car hauler and the water truck in the pictures shown. The Zephyr Hills Water Truck, in the upper right picture, makes regular deliveries to the oceanfront and parks at the end of the street, blocking the intersection, creating a turning hazard for other vehicles turning onto or off of Mars Way. Google and Apple Maps send their vehicles to Mars Way. Google uses traffic patterns to determine their mapping directions, so unless there's a change by the town in the way the traffic flows on the street, trucks and other vehicles will continue to use Mars Way to access the town. No-truck signage, the no-truck signage has been ineffective and there's been no tickets issued and little enforcement. As you can see from these pictures, very large trucks use the street and many encroach on the other lane. They are much too large for such a narrow residential street with no sidewalk. And finally, here you have more trucks on the street. This is a constant and will not change without changes to the traffic flow on the street. The resident, residents also have concerns over speeding on the street. The 2020 traffic study showed that with a posted speed of twenty-five miles an hour, the eighty-fifth percentile speed was between thirty-nine and forty-two miles an hour, and the fiftieth percentile speed was between thirty-one and thirty-three miles an hour. We do not believe anything has changed since the study and since the limit was lowered to twenty miles an hour. And if we are correct, most people are driving eleven to twenty-two miles an hour over the speed limit. The speed trailer has been used sparingly and is placed just above the incline and does not capture the true maximum speed that people are driving. Empty patrol vehicles have been used infrequently. Parking is our next issue. Much of the time, cars are parked all along the first half of the street. Many of these vehicles do not belong to Mars Way residents. People serving the oceanfront condominium and beachgoers park on the street. Mars Way residents have to deal with four to zero visibility pulling out of their driveways and lack of parking for their own visitors and service vehicles. Pedestrians have nowhere to go to avoid oncoming traffic when cars are parked in the street, and these cars, parked cars, also encroach on the travel lanes, making the lane more narrow. The oceanfront has the space to accommodate their service vehicles. This condominium has the least amount of units of any condominium on Ocean Drive with twenty-four and has twelve guest parking spaces, which equals one guest space for every two units. Why do they feel entitled to send their vehicles to Mars Way and not use the spaces behind their gate? The town code requires one guest space for every seven units. Their guest spaces far exceed the code requirement. In addition, only about half of these units are homesteaded, so in the summer, when the building is nearly empty and there is service and remodeling work being done in the building, they still send their service vehicles to Mars Way. They even have a sign on their gate that states "All service and vendors park outside the gate." Would it be acceptable to the homeowners on Surfside if the Waterfords send their vehicles to park on the street? They have one guest space for every three units. Would it be acceptable if the Brigadoon, a significantly larger complex with a gated entrance, sent their service vehicles to Apollo? Would it be acceptable if the homes in Seven Hundred Ocean, a gated community, sent their service vehicles to North Lyra? I bet the answer is no. The Coretta Project, which caused much consternation in town, was required to have one space per seven units, much fewer than the oceanfront. What will the town do if the Coretta Project starts sending their vehicles over to Plaza La Merita Park? I'm sure the town would put a stop to it immediately. The situation on Mars Way should be unacceptable to any resident in town. In addition to the safety issues the parked vehicles cause, the service vehicles have, that have parked on the street, have thrown their garbage onto our properties. They've played loud music while they eat their lunch in their truck, and some are also getting high in their vehicles while on their lunch break. Why do the residents of Mars Way have to put up with this? An option for the council to consider is a residential parking permit program. Palm Beach, where I worked for over twenty-three years and ran the parking permit program there, has shown that a legally defensible residential permit program can be implemented. Palm Beach issued over fifteen hundred parking permits per year when I was there. Residents have a sticker on their back left bunker and visitors have a placard they hang in their rearview mirror. The program would be easy to administer for only seventeen homes on the street, and in Palm Beach, civilian parking enforcement officers do most of the enforcement. In the past, the beach renourishment funding was cited as a reason a permit program could not be implemented. Mars Way and other residential side streets are not part of the Juno Beach renourishment parking requirements. Palm Beach also receives federal and state funding for their beach renourishment projects, and their parking permit programs have not affected the beach permits or grant funding at all. On the next few sides, I have summarized our concerns and laid out options for town council consideration. The first concern I mentioned was pedestrian and bicycle safety. They have nowhere to walk except a narrow road. Bicycles and pedestrians have to share a very narrow road with large trucks and cars, and residents do not have safe passage to the beach or Ocean Drive. Options we'd like the council to consider are make Mars a one-way street east to west. Elimin, if this would eliminate eastbound traffic, the road could be narrowed by adding a bike lane and/or walking area, or chicanes could be added, like some one-way streets in residential West Palm neighborhoods. The one-way should not be an issue for FDOT, Palm Beach County, or Palm Beach County Fire Rescue based on the recent traffic study. The other option is to close the median at US One. This would reduce the amount of traffic coming into Mars Way. Another big concern I mentioned is truck traffic. The narrow residential street is not an appropriate truck route. Google Maps directs drivers to Mars Way. We have been told by a traffic engineer that Google uses traffic patterns to develop their mapping directions, so unless changes are made to the driving patterns, Google Maps will continue to direct traffic, including large trucks, to Mars Way. Making Mars a one-way street east to west would eliminate the truck traffic coming into town on Mars Way from the west. It would also significantly reduce, it would also significantly reduce the truck traffic exiting town on Mars. If the trucks don't enter on Mars, they probably won't exit on Mars, especially if there is enforcement and the town makes the no-truck signage more visible at Ocean. The other option is to close the median at US One in Mars Way. This would eliminate the truck traffic coming into town from the north using Mars Way. There would also be, need to be enforcement and visible signing, signage at US One and Ocean stating "No trucks strictly enforced." As I mentioned earlier, speeding and parking by non-Mars Way vehicles are safety concerns. Speed limits should be strictly enforced, as they are on Ocean Drive and US One. Parking should be limited to Mars Way residents only and a resident parking program should be adopted. As the population of Palm Beach County grows, the issue is only going to become worse as more beachgoers use the street. There is only a finite number of public beaches, and once word gets out that beachgoers can park in town on Mars Way and other residential side streets in town, the town will be forced to do something. Why wait? Use Mars Way as a test case. For your convenience, I've added a couple slides that summarize the safety issues, and the next slide is a summary of the options to improve safety. Mars Way is a complicated little street. It was never meant to be the main thoroughfare into and out of town, nor the main truck route. It's a very narrow street, significantly less than FDOT standards. There are line-of-sight issues. There is a lot of traffic on the street. Over seven hundred cars during the week travel Mars Way, based on the 2020 traffic study. There are large trucks and other trade vehicles using the street. There are no sidewalks for pedestrians. Parked cars cause visibility issues, pulling out of the driveway and encroach into the travel lane, and there are speeding vehicles. This slide shows the options we believe that would significantly improve safety on the street. We believe the best option is to make Mars Way a one-way street east to west. This is a low-cost option and would eliminate incoming truck traffic and two-way traffic. A bike lane could be added to narrow the road. A second favorite option would be to close the median at US One in Mars Way. This would reduce the amount of traffic coming in, onto Mars Way and reduce the truck traffic coming into the town from the north. We would, we've been told that FDOT would pay for the cost of the closure. This option would still allow for two-way traffic, which causes safety concerns, and there won't, wouldn't be any walking or biking lane for safety. The speed limits definitely should be enforced on Mars Way, and the council should adopt a resident parking permit program. In conclusion, the quantity, type, and speed of traffic, line-of-sight issues, narrowness of the road, and lack of sidewalks are the issues facing the residents of Mars Way. Making Mars Way a one-way street would significantly reduce the traffic and eliminate all traffic coming into town using Mars Way. The recent traffic study that'll be presented next concluded for closing the median, the redistribution of traffic from Mars Way will only have a minimal impact to each of the study intersections and would not result in any detrimental impact. We believe that a similar conclusion could be made for a one-way street. As Palm Beach County traffic population grows, traffic and parking issues will only grow, and the severity of our problem is getting worse. Now is the time to make changes before somebody gets hurt. The decision the council needs to make is between safety or convenience. Town residents and visitors can adapt to new traffic patterns if a one-way is implemented and use Donald Ross to enter the town instead of Mars Way, slightly increasing their traffic time. This should be an easy decision. Residential safety should always be the town's top priority. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, I believe we have our traffic engineer.
Yes. Good afternoon. For the record, Brian Kelly, professional traffic engineer with Simmons &amp; White. I'm gonna try to be relatively brief because the purpose of me coming up here and presenting is to go over the traffic diversion study we did and like many traffic studies, they're not highly entertaining, so I don't want to waste too much time. I think there'll be a lot of question and answers that we can get to. The first thing I want to do is kind of get to the history and my involvement. I think it was 2019, something to that effect, that there was concern from residents in the town regarding speeding on Mars Way. So we initially did a traffic study really back in 2019 and 2020 to do a traffic calming study to see if there was a speeding issue. We did identify a speeding issue at that time. Obviously, because of COVID, that took some time before we could have public hearings and there could be further discussion on that. At the time, our recommendation was to do speed humps or speed tables. Those are not the little speed bumps, they're the larger ones, either twelve, fourteen feet or even twenty-two feet. You can go a little bit faster over them. It's not quite as discomforting as those small little speed bumps. Regardless, the residents didn't, the majority of residents decided they did not want it. There's always controversy involved with speed humps. There are negatives associated with them. They aren't the nicest thing to look at. They are noisy. They are effective in reducing speed. That is something that they have been shown to be effective, and that was our recommendation at that time. It was determined that in order to do something here, we can start kind of with a, you know, minimal type of impact approach, something that doesn't have necessarily negative associations with that. And that is why the road is now striped down the center line. The idea behind that was to try to keep people more in their lane. Now whether actually people do that, obviously some people do, some people probably don't, along with all, with the no-truck signage as well. And we actually did reduce the speed limit from twenty-five miles per hour now to twenty miles per hour around at that same time. We have not actually done a follow-up study necessarily on what the speeding impact is on Mars since those changes. Anyways, getting back to the traffic diversion stu, study, it was determined from the council and also the residents, reviewing the different options was, can there be a closure of US One that would restrict the movement of Mars Way to what we call right-in, right-out? So right now, a lot of the cut-through traffic is people coming up from Donald Ross Road, going down, making a left turn onto Mars Way. So the idea was, could we essentially just take the median, extend it, so it's blocked off and you can make a right-in and right-out on a Mars Way? We've had discussions with the FDOT in the past about that, and they said, we need to see a traffic study. We need to see a diversion study because you are now changing traffic patterns. We need to know what those impacts are before whether we can say yes or no to it. So that is the purpose of the traffic diversion study that we performed last year. It was to look at what are the traffic operational impacts if we were to close that median and make a right-in, right-out? So as part of that, we collected new traffic counts on Mars Way and US One, and we also looked at Olympus, US One, we looked at Donald Ross and US One, and also a couple of median cuts and left turns that were in between those. In the evaluation that the DOT, Palm Beach County, and really any traffic engineering practices, you look at the peak hour volume, so when the roads are the busiest is what we're looking at. So the conclusion of the traffic study showed that if we were to close that median, the volumes that would be diverted to Donald Ross or to Olympus or something else, there wouldn't be a detrimental impact to traffic operations. And I want to be clear what that means. So that means that if you're at the signal of Donald Ross Road in US One, you're not all of a sudden waiting fifteen more seconds than what you would have. It would have been very, very minimal. The queuing impact for turn lanes at the different intersections on US One weren't going to be changed very much, so it was a very minor traffic operational impact. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean there's no impact whatsoever in the sense of if you're now directing people to Olympus, yes, now there's going to be more traffic on Olympus. Is it going to be a capacity issue? Absolutely not. Is it maybe a quality of life issue for different people? Will people start speeding on Olympus? That is a possibility. That wasn't necessary, that wasn't the scope of what this traffic diversion study showed. This was, would the FDOT have an issue because of the impact it would have to, to their roadway system intersections? And as I said, the results, no, that, that was the case. So we have had a couple of follow-up conversations with the FDOT, and the FDOT essentially has said that they are amenable to the closure of the median on US One and Mars Way. There is a possibility for them to provide funding to it. It, it sounds like that's, you know, a very realistic possibility. You know, that obviously there had to be much further conversations with them regarding that, but that is something that was discussed with them and they have been, they have been open with. I think I covered the main items that I need to. I'm gonna kind of look at Frank and David real quick. If I missed something, you want to jump in? They, please feel free to. Otherwise, that's, that's kind of it. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions regarding, you know, anything that was presented before, any questions you have. I'm certainly happy to, to assist in any that way. Any issue with traffic calming, you'll keep hearing me say this word, there's trade-offs. There's pros and negatives associated with it, and maybe it's just kind of trying to find the right balance and then ends up being a policy decision, certainly.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have any immediate questions? Because otherwise, I'm going to call him back, but open it up to public comment.
Yeah, I would say that, and also I would be open to hearing presentations and comments from residents of Olympus Drive, and I know the oceanfront condo is here, and I would like to give them equal time, more than three minutes, if they need it, to state their concerns.
That's fine, but yeah, Brian, if you don't mind, we're just gonna open a public comment. We probably have to pull you back, so.
Is it okay to ask, Brian, a quick question? So this was the diversion, the traffic diversion study, and it was only about the impact of, of closing the median. That's the only, that's what you're talking about here, just so that everybody's familiar with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So in honor of the fact that we did have one side, if there is one person that's willing to speak for the other side, we will give that person extended time. I'm not sure who that is, but we will allow you to have a similar speech to what Ms. Lecanche had, and I would have you go first, whoever that is. Please do.
Steve.
Closer to the microphone, please.
Good afternoon. Red wine here, four-six-one Olympus Drive. For many years, I've been a real estate developer and up in the DC area, and I've looked at lots of traffic studies. So I had one of my traffic study guys actually review the traffic study, and this is a guy that's one of the best in the DC area, and that's in your package. And so he's commented on each part because it really is a nuance. We desperately do not want you to make Mars one-way. We also don't want you to cut off their median cut because that traffic, as Mike Leonard says, will come to us. Their report, or the report says, it's very likely that the speeding problem will be pushed to Olympus. I don't think the city needs to have an accident on Olympus with that in a report. So to me, it's like, I wouldn't like make our street faster. We actually would like whatever they get. If they get one-way, we like one-way. If they get speed bumps, we like speed bumps. If they get no-truck signs that actually work, we like no-truck signs that actually work because they're really the same. We have a few less residents right now. We have two lots that will be developed, so we have about half of what they have. But it's still, you know, it's basically the same. Our width is twenty-five feet that I measured yesterday. Their width is actually twenty-four feet, including the gutters, which are part of the road, and they have actually two sidewalks. We actually don't have a sidewalk, I mean, we have a sidewalk, but it's pushed over by a landscape island, and therefore it really doesn't help in terms of roadway. What happens on Mars is you get a bunch of trucks and cars that are living, that people are living there. I was there actually yesterday, Sunday, took pictures, it's in my report, and if the cars were actually parked on the road, and let's say only on one side, like they do at Marabella and Palm Beach Gardens, they force all parking on the street to only be on one side, either the odd side or the even side, that will automatically slow things down, and there'll be lots of parking. And we totally agree with the parking management system. So, you know, the problem isn't, I, the, my guy's review of the report says, if you make it one-way, we'll get three hundred and fifty more cars a day. That's a lot, and we already have a speeding problem. We already have truck issues, so we don't want, you know, their problem to come to us. It's just certainly not fair. Also, if you close the median, what's gonna happen is people are gonna fly down Route One even faster to get to Olympus, to make a left, to fly up Olympus, to fly back down to get to the ocean condos. So it's not gonna solve a problem. It's just gonna create more problems. You're gonna have more speeding everywhere. So to us, the, you know, whatever you do to us, you should do to them and vice versa. But speed humps, my guy has all sorts of good information as to what you can do. It's an urban street. It's seven hundred feet. It, there are a lot of them all across America, and it's just part of how you deal with it. And, you know, so we, we, we think you need to really review my guy's, you know, we think you need to really review my guys', you know, interpretation and maybe do more of a, you know, overall study of every road. The truck signs, my guy says, are totally don't work at all because you have, except for local deliveries. And that just opens it up. So you need no trucks, period. No trucks on Olympus, no trucks on Mars. And if you have that with maybe a hundred dollar fine or whatever you might do, you're not going to get any trucks on those roads. And that, you know, if that's what you want to do, fine. But to eliminate the median or to make it one way is just going to drive all this traffic down to us.
Hey Fred, Fred, the only thing I'm going to do here, though, is if you're giving up, he's got three minutes. Okay.
Hi, Steve Allen, four fifty one Olympus Drive. Before they, on Olympus Drive, it used to be much slower until they redid the street and put the yellow lines on to make two ways. And I don't know the reason for that. Maybe people think that it's more of a major roadway. I think it's a bad idea to make Mars one way because it's just going to make more. First of all, they're going to go fast down there. And secondly, it's going to impact Olympus Drive. But I have three points that I just want to share with you. The first is speed bumps or speed tables. Speed bumps are like the little round ones you really have to slow down. Speed tables, if you go anywhere in Northwood, there's speed tables everywhere. They're kind of long, you slow down and you go. That would be one remedy. Simple remedy. Number two, no trucks, big sign, simple remedy. Number three, permit parking on Olympus and permit parking on Mars way, one side. That eliminates all the problems of the contractors parking their cars and eating on Mars way and throwing their garbage. And the same thing on Olympus Drive. If it's a permit, I, I used to live in Palm Beach, never had a problem, got a permit on my car. If there was a visitor, I'd go to the town, they'd give me a visitor thing. Never had a problem with that. Simple remedy. Permit parking. I think that one side and permit parking, the, the speed tables, Mars, leave Mars the way it is. I think that'll just stop everything. Because people aren't going to speed down the street with the speed, with the speed table, not a speed bump, but a speed table. That's all.
Jeremy LaClanche.
Town council members, my name is Jeremy LaClanche. Property, my wife on Mars way, and we also reside in Juno Beach. Comprehensive plans are the centerpiece for local planning efforts. They articulate a series of goals, objectives, policies and standards that are intended to guide day to day decisions of elected officials and local government staff. Juno Beach's comprehensive plan talks about, among other things, pedestrian and bicycle safety, safe, efficient traffic flow, proper sight distances at driveways and roadways, regulating and limiting on street parking. Yet Mars way is the forgotten street. For almost thirty years, residents have been complaining about safety and parking, and very little has been done. Jane, in her presentation, laid out the issues that are being faced on the street, the steps that the town approved in twenty twenty one have not been effective. Each time Mars way residents brought their issues to the council, the council decided to not make larger changes because they didn't think it was in the best interest of the town. However, much of the information that was provided to the council was not accurate, such as a statement by the former town manager that they would lose state funding for beach renourishment, where town, where, where the town to be, to restrict parking. The town and the beach renourishment per- permit. Excuse me, the town had the beach renourishment permit and knew full well that Mars way was not included in the permits restricted areas. Funding wouldn't be impacted at all if Mars way was restricted. This is fear mongering. And as was the comment that if you restrict access to Mars way, all of that traffic would then go to Olympus Drive. Olympus Drive is towards the south end of the town. Most residents live in the middle of the town and not going to drive half a mile south on US one to then drive half a mile north on Ocean Drive. They're going to use Donald Ross Road. We have been told by the traffic engineer we hired and the most recent traffic study also concluded that the traffic flows would not cause significant issues on other streets. So the council made their prior decisions based not on facts, but exaggerations and erroneous information. I'd like to just point out that my wife talked about quantity of traffic. She talked about type of traffic. She talked about narrowness of a road, the line of sight issues, no pedestrian sidewalks. Okay, lack of proper, proper sight distances at driveways. How does thirty seconds. Okay, how, how does speed tables fix any of those problems? They don't. Thank you.
Dorothy Heiner. Final. Hines, sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Dorothy Hines. I reside at five seventy Ocean Drive. As a member of the Ocean Club, Ocean Club, the Ocean Front, I do use Mars way. But I believe that Mars way is a road in our community that can be used by everyone. And the idea that the Mars way families are trying to make it that it's a private road, I think is unacceptable. We have over three thousand houses in our community and you're allowing seventeen homes to impact everybody else. And while I heard the gentleman talk about the study, I'd like to know if anything was done. The fact that we have all this development happening on by Donald Ross Bridge. How will that impact us? This morning, which was ironic, I was at CVS, going to CVS, it took me fifteen minutes. It was the eleven thirty bridge. Took me fifteen minutes to get from Donald Ross right before CVS over the bridge. So what happens now if you close Mars way? And don't let, don't let us have it. As far as the parking, I know that there are people that park that are at Oceanfront and park there. But I will say to you, as someone who lives there, I know that twenty five years ago, we gave up part of our property so that everyone could have access to walk there. And the fact that we actually maintain that walkway, that I'm sure the Mars way people enjoy. So if you're going to close that, do me a favor, give me the property back. And we'd love to put parking there. Thank you.
Beverly Guy Bell. Closer to the microphone, please.
I live at four fifty one Olympus Drive. And I don't know much about the technicalities of traffic studies, but I can tell you my personal experience from living there. It's not fair at all to drive more traffic to Olympus Drive. We already have utility trucks from that service Juno Beach barreling through several times a day. We have other types of delivery trucks also barreling through several times a day. We have a lot of trucks pulling in and out of the vacant lot that's at the corner of Olympus and Ocean Drive. I don't know how that's allowed, but they're often blocking the roadway and it's, it's a problem. We have chronic speeders. We have, we, you've probably seen our house, we have a little green man right in front of our property as a reminder for traffic to slow down. Yet we were warned by our very own police, policemen, not to let the little green man out into the street at all because someone complained. You can be assured no driver would be harmed, but only he would be inconvenienced to go at a reasonable speed. So we also have a problem that's kind of invisible to everybody else. We have a treatment facility that is on the west side of US one, and we've had numerous incidents from that facility on Arrow Block. Most people don't know about it. It's never reported in any police records that I know of anyway. And it's a problem. So we don't need more problems on our street. And I would just ask you to consider the quality of life that, yeah, we're just a few houses. But we deserve to, you know, live in peace and not have speeders, which we do chronically and big trucks all the time. Thank you.
Jack Dolwick.
Four fifty Ocean Drive, Juno Ocean Club. I listened to some of this stuff and, and I feel a little sympathy, but again, I use Mars way all the time. I go twenty miles an hour. And I see all these cars parked on both sides of the road. I don't understand why we have to close the median, why we have to make it a one way when there are very decent solutions. I, my home up north where I used to live, we had speed bumps and that stopped the, the speed. I don't understand why we can't have parking permits. People only from Mars way should be able to park there. And we should have one side parking, just as they suggested, speed bumps. And the police guys should enforce the, the procedures. They should enforce the speed and they should enforce no trucks and make it decent. That's it.
Mike Lewis.
I begin, I had asked Friday to get more time. Since I didn't know until now, we made arrangements just to have other people speak, so.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I think my remarks are going to be three minutes or less, but I do have other people that are going to speak because I didn't know I would be granted more time.
Well, I, you, you get an extra thirty seconds automatically, so we'll give it a whirl, see how you go.
Could I ask for just to show our hands from oceanfront people that are here? Opposition.
And, and Mayor, you know, they're significant. They've always been significant in there. So I think if we could give them a little bit more time, are you representing most of the people here or is everyone talking independently? I just think to be fair.
I, I understand, but that's kind of what I thought was happening in the beginning here, and you allowed Fred Wine to step in and be the one to speak for everyone. Okay.
Different area.
All right. All right, fine, fine. Please, please go ahead. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give you five minutes because that's what Fred Wine had. And we're, we're good. Okay? All right.
My name is Mike Lewis. I'm a resident of Oceanfront Condos. There are twenty four owners in our unit. Most of them are here. We oppose this. I'm also in a benchmark group. It's about a dozen or so condo association representatives who meet once a month to talk about condo issues in Juno Beach. Includes Beachfront, Brigadoon and Surf. They've all authorized me to say they're in opposition to this. Also, I've had conversations with Olympus Drive people who are in opposition to this. So the big question here is what's really best for the community of Juno Beach as a whole? As is noted, there are seventeen houses on this street out of thirty two hundred and twenty two from the twenty twenty census. So it's less than half a percent of the households that are represented here. There are only four access points to Town Hall, the Police Department and much of the beach in Juno. And yet this less than half a percent want to limit the access to those fundamental places. Mars way has regularly been on the agenda before this town council. Goes back many years. Go back to two thousand and one, when over two hundred thousand dollars in public funds were spent to improve Mars way. Putting in gutter, sidewalk, trees, plantings. And it was for public parking. It came back in two thousand and eleven for speed bumps, tuning fourteen and fifteen for parking, which we'll talk about later. And again, in twenty nineteen to twenty one, speed bumps were the recommended solution. And Mars way folks said, we don't want it. There was also discussion of one way traffic. And the town opposed it in no small part due to the emergency response time and how that would be affected and the fact that it would increase speed on the one way streets. Each time that has come before this town council, there have been concessions and compromises made. Now with this engineering report today, what they've talked about is what would happen currently right at that intersection. There's not a real forecast of what it's going to do to the intersection at Donald Ross and US one, which is experiencing explosive expansion. So when we look out, we can see that there are going to be residents who will be affected by this. The bottom line is that change will almost certainly be, there will almost certainly be unintended consequences. Such as the domino effect on other streets. And with this is the parking issue that is fundamental to Oceanfront. Now, we understand that when we were granted the right to build this building, that about ten, ten parking spaces were taken from us in order to create the JB Access Three, which we granted the land and we're maintaining that in perpetuity. That's over and done. It can't be changed, but it does impact where we have the ability to park cars. We do occasionally have people from Oceanfront park in these public places. But contrary to what was asserted here today, I can assure you that we are not routinely sending over service vehicles to park on Mars way. We've had the same building superintendent for over twenty years. And when this came up in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, there's even a note in the town council records that we were cooperating, that we had stopped sending people over there, and that continues. That absolutely continues. We want to be good neighbors. There is no perfect solution to what to do with Mars way. That's pretty clear. There is no perfect solution. But change or compromise do not always result in the best answer. This is one of those times, then what's best for the community is to leave well enough alone.
Bill Vigiano.
Actually.
Sorry, Bill, no, we're, they, we had the three groups that covered the major stuff.
Yeah, I know.
From here on out, it's standard comments.
I'm really surprised at the turnout here. So I would repeat a lot of what Jane says. There's actually the first gentleman that spoke with Olympus. I actually agreed with him on a couple of things like the no trucks and maybe if you do something on Mars, you could do the same on Olympus. There was a couple of things that I actually agreed with. There were some things that I thought I would like to have an opportunity to speak refute from Mr. Lewis. But I just wanted to, my original thoughts were that I'm looking at this from someone who's living on the street and enduring the issues that we have on the street. I know it's a convenience. It's not easy to make this change. I know it's, it can be an inconvenience, slight inconvenience for some people. But I think the status quo, leaving it the way it is on Mars way without making these improvements, which, you know, we're not trying to make it a private street. But we are trying to reduce the volume, which I think would contribute a lot to increasing the safety on the street, which is really what it's all about. Let me see what else I had here. You know, personally, I've had to deal with a lot of aggressive drivers, large oversight vehicles on the street. There's been even like little road rage incidents, just pulling into my driveway. Just slowing down to pull into my driveway, people actually trying to pass me, blowing the horn at me. I mean, just simple things like that where there's been virtually no enforcement of speeding on the street. There's been no enforcement of the truck ordinance. So I, I wanted to make that point. I think it is a unique street. I'm not saying it's an easy fix. But I think leaving it the same, you know, like Mr. Lewis said, leaving well enough alone. I don't really think that's well enough. I'm, I'm trying to see it from the other side as well. And I don't see it being that, you know, much of a burden to the other residents in the community, which was, I think, borne by the, the traffic studies that there would be. which was, I think, borne by the the traffic studies, so there would be minimal impacts on other on other points. And so, I don't know, I feel I feel that we should, you know, at least, you know, try this, maybe the one way would be probably the easiest thing to do rather than closing the median and see what the reasons are.
You got 30 seconds, Bill.
We could, if we could do the same thing on Olympus, I mean, one thing, I agreed with the gentleman from Olympus Drive on some things. But on one thing I disagree with because it hasn't been proven yet is that I don't think that all of the excess traffic would go down to Olympus. I think my, just my feeling is that a lot of it would actually go on to Donald Ross, so. That's my input.
Thank you.
Douglas Armstrong.
I think a number of the points that I would like to make have been made. And I know we have someone else from our building who's ready to go to make a few more. So in the interest of time, I'll just be very short. First of all, I'm Doug Armstrong, I'm a resident at the Oceanfront. I've been there about 12 years, I'm go up and down, walk Mars Way frequently, either walking, bicycle or driving. And familiar, I think, with the issues, I don't see them quite as dire as is reported. But I think the one thing that puzzles, concerns me, and I know many of our residents, is the expanding development that's happening with the corner of of one and Donald Ross and how that flow is going to put a lot of impact into the Donald Ross Ocean Drive intersection with people crossing bicycles, everything else. And the more that we start pushing traffic into that direction is going to make that, you know, it already is a bit of a safety problem, a worse safety problem. The second issue is, we're puzzled by the Mars Mars Street owners, they would reject the speed tables or speed humps, not the speed bumps, but the speed tables. Because speed is clearly the biggest problem on that street to me, or at the top of the list. It's controlling that, control that, control safety and many of the other problems that are there. And we find it found it a little hypocritical that if they're worried about safety, they wouldn't allow or support those things to go in. We think that that needs to be seriously looked at. So I'll pass in the interest of time.
Thank you, Doug.
And Chapronka.
Good afternoon, my name is Karen Chapronka and I do live on Mars Way. I just want to emphasize how risky it is to walk on Mars Way. I know there are a lot of issues that may transfer to other people or they feel they will. But I walk my dog, I walk my granddaughter, I walk visitors down to the beach. And the street is unlike other streets that I walk in Juno. The volume, not the speed, is clearly one of the issues. The cars and trucks, they speed and when you're going, it's hard to find even a few feet to be safe in some of the areas. We do not have sidewalks, you said we had two sidewalks. We have parking pads that were established when the sewage program came through. They asked the Mars Way residents whether they wanted parking or sidewalk. That may have not been a good decision, but it was a decision made at the time that they wanted parking. And the parking pads were put in there specifically for the residents to park. There are not, even those parking pads are not in every lot. They're only on a few of the lots and then some of the parking pads have areas that go chicane type things that go into the road and have palm trees growing in them. So there is not a sidewalk, number one. I'm constantly fearful when walking my granddaughter. And I watched my dog come close to being hit. I know really that it is really the hyper vigilance of the individuals walking on Mars Way that keeps people from facing tragedy. I love Juno. But I'm afraid to walk on my street. As leaders, it will be your responsibility to take action or to make it safe as you can with your priorities. But Jane went over the issues. This street, you do not, I talk to traffic engineers and engineers and I have them in my family. And the gutter does not get included in the road measurement. The road is smaller than what F dot, you know, Florida Department of Transportation recommends for a single lane road, even the smallest. We're not talking about, they recommend 12 feet on each lane. But the minimum that they ever have allow is 10. This is a unique situation. There's no comparatives. No one else in Juno faces this level of danger walking in their street. Please take some action, it is time for action. We've had studies, we've come back, we've taken minimal steps. Nothing is working that we've done and we've spent so many years at this. The other thing is, I mean, Oceanfront, I understand.
Karen, you got 30 seconds.
I understand their situation. But I also know that the beach access was part of the development plan, like every other development plan that is set up when somebody develops. It is not something they gave up. Anyway, I think that if something isn't done, I just, I just worry that it might even be my family and that gets hit or something happens to them. So I'm quite emotional about this. I don't begrudge Olympus, I wish they could have whatever we had too, but not speed bumps. You don't know what those are like to live next to, you claim, but those, and I know it's not, it's flat.
Karen, I gotta cut you off, sorry.
Don Shapiro.
In the ocean front, I've been a resident of Juno Beach for, let's see, about 16 years, actually. And my comments are primarily related to the speeding issue. The planners of town of Juno Beach and their infinite wisdom created four, not three, not five, but four ingress egress roads to our main thoroughfare of Ocean Drive. To this day, it works well, allowing the free flow of traffic into and out of our wonderful little town. Sure, it might work with only closure of the US One median as our engineer has submitted with his guesstimate. But we're certainly going to have a longer wait for that extra light, red light or two on the south curve, or especially at Donald Ross, if the roads are made one way as proposed. The foremost complaint from the people on Mars Way has always been speeding. And this was alluded to by the last when we spoke. Yet when solutions with traffic calming measures are often offered, Mars Way residents have repeatedly turned them down. Speed humps are not, not, not the humps, but rather speed tables are used even in our town. There's, there's some on Juno Isles Boulevard and I don't see, and that's a residential street primarily, even though it is a through street. Also, speed, speed tables, in addition to speed tables, rather, there could be use of speed cushions or chokers, which would work well. I don't even know if that's been considered. All have been proven to work, as this engineer has pointed out. Might even be worth considering these measures on Olympus Drive, as has been mentioned also. So if both streets had it, I think both streets would be a lot safer and the speeding issue would be addressed. Even one of Mayor Cook's flashing light monitoring signs might help. Again, the speeding is a concern, there's no reason why Mars Way residents should not accept appropriate traffic calming measures. Certainly making Mars One Way will in all likelihood only aggravate the speeding issue on their street. The report, the report three years ago from the town specifically opposed a one-way solution because it would reduce emergency response and increase speeding. Yet what are we doing? It's like if there were a window in our otherwise fine house that flies were coming through, we're rebuilding the whole house rather than just putting up a screen. Let's keep the status quo, it works, or else at a maximum pursue the use of traffic calming measures to address the only formidable issue on Mars Way and maintain free flow through our wonderful little town. Thank you.
Cynthia Frazier.
Council, friends and neighbors. My name is Cynthia Frazier and I reside at 1705 Floral Drive. I've lived here for many years and frequently use Mars Way to get to Town Hall and Pelican Lake. I not only traverse this road during the summer months, but also during the winter and peak season here. When I travel on Mars Way, I am cautious to observe the speed limit and even travel maybe 15 miles an hour or 10, just to make sure to go slow as I am in a neighborhood that I am cautious to. I have to say, I've never seen a pedestrian on the middle of the street or even walking near the street. I've never seen any large trucks that have blocked my way that I have to go around. Perhaps I go on off-peak or something. However, I do understand the concerns of the residents. The street I live on has constant large delivery trucks for Thirsty Turtle coming down fast, not looking, backing up to get back out and not observing the street. Tire Kingdom uses our neighborhood to test drive cars to make sure that their tires are are well. The bike store uses our neighborhood to test drive and take customers around very fast on their speed bikes. I would like to have our neighborhood secluded from these issues. But I don't live in a gated community, nor does Mars Way. I've heard so many good solutions this this afternoon for implementation. One that I would like to tell you about is a very successful example that a colleague at work of mine gave of speed bumps being implemented in Port St. Lucie on Abingdon Avenue with cars traveling on Import Drive and Savona Boulevard, Abingdon Avenue running in between. Residents were so concerned and outraged about what was going, all the thoroughfare on their street. The city of Port St. Lucie installed the speed bumps or speed tables. And my colleague said it curtailed the speed of traffic on that avenue 100% and even deter travelers from using that road. I am all for the speed tables or speed bumps for that. Let's see. I also do don't feel that altering.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Medium is a solution because of the intersection and traffic along US One. And in regards to the median at Park Street and US One is already extremely busy. To come out onto Park Street to want to head north, you just don't do it. You go up somewhere else and make a U-turn because the traffic going back and forth to come out is so, so terrible. So there's my thoughts and I thank you so much.
Laura Rogers.
Mayor and councils and my name is Simon, 21 Mars Way. I was so excited to see the amount of people here. I thought we're all certainly on the same team. We care deeply about this town. Nobody wants to see anybody get hurt. And I see now that the reason that we don't get anything done is because everybody is severe faces, smirks when others are sharing. They are looking out for their own interests. I am very concerned, living on the street, that someone's going to get killed. It's that simple. I don't want speeding on any street. I think that we have to be careful about that. But convenience compared to my niece and my three-year-old. If you haven't seen people walking in the middle of the street, then you haven't seen the street. That's the only place we have to walk. We don't have sidewalks. I can hardly get out of my driveway. I have to just back out a little bit at a time and hope that someone sees me. I have a 10-week-old puppy that you'll see me walking, who's adorable, and it's frightening. It's frightening to walk down the street. There are no sidewalks, there's cars parked. I, I don't want there to be a lot of traffic on Olympus. I, I don't want anyone to suffer, but I would love to see us more on the same team, concerned about our welfare, not about convenience. And that's all I have to say.
John Rogers.
Four twenty-one Mars Way. I've been a resident of Juno Beach for two years now. And the street I live on is not safe. There are no sidewalks. It's difficult to pull out of my driveway. A lot of trucks. It's just not safe. And I think something should be done. I mean, I, I realize this has been going on for a long time. And I don't see anything happening. I don't see anything, you know, it's a safety issue to me and my family. And that's all I have, thank you.
Kathy Shea.
Good afternoon, everyone, I'm Kathy Shea from 13878 Oleander Avenue. We're actually on the west side behind Tire Kingdom, sandwiched between Tire Kingdom and the Thirsty Turtle. It's been interesting to see, over 50 years of living here, the growth that I escaped from Miami to try to avoid, and it followed me here, especially the traffic. All that being said, I can't change that. What I'd like to be able to echo from my neighbor Cynthia is what's been happening at the corner of Donald Ross Road, which is the bigger picture, friends, as far as I'm concerned. When Coretta goes in and when Pulte goes in, that intersection is going to be unbearable. When the bridge goes up, it's already gridlocked. We are actually locked into our neighborhood, sometimes for 15, 20 minutes to get out to go northbound. So what's been happening is when people come over that bridge, there's a pattern, which I'm sure this fine gentleman can confirm, where most of the traffic wants to go northbound on US One. The backup is all the way to the bridge, so they go south and look for a way to make a U-turn to go northbound. That's been happening in front of Tire Kingdom. You probably know there was a very, very serious accident there not too long ago. The police routed the traffic off of US One, down Floral, down Oleander and back out southbound. It was that bad of an accident, they closed the southbound lanes. What's been happening is the cars are backing up in front of Tire Kingdom. That turn lane only holds three cars. There were six cars, they were blocking the one lane, so people had to go to the other lane, which created another hazard. This traffic flow has almost made it necessary for us to go south and make a U-turn on Mars Way at that median, just to get northbound out of our community. Please don't close that median. The trucks that are backing in and out that my neighbor talked about are destroying Oleander Avenue. They are weight limit way over what that street was designed for. Tire Kingdom, again, using our neighborhood for testing their and driving their vehicles. So the question I would propose to the town regarding all of this, because it's a bigger picture than just Mars, Mars Way, I'm looking at like the.
Kathy, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. How do we, as a community, because we don't have the through traffic like Mars has, how do we start the process of becoming a gated community so we can stop the flow of that traffic? They're going to cut through, they're already doing it. They're already doing it. Thank you for listening.
Carolyn Shapiro.
About the bumps or tables. In my, in my, at my street up in Connecticut, we have gates which slow the traffic, same sort of thing where trucks can come flying down there. And to slow the traffic, we put gates on each side, so creates a swerve which slows everything down, just as a possible alternative if the speed tables don't work for Mars. That's all.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Tony, I've been informed to only allow you one minute.
Thank you.
That was, by the way, that was, that was from over here. That wasn't me.
Tony Mariano, 570 Ocean Drive. I'm in the Oceanfront condo, and I'd like to say, you know, it was very interesting hearing both sides of the discussion because, you know, as former Public Works Director, I was obviously ultimately, you know, intimately involved with it. And ultimately, the decision was made that the street was going to be restriped, new traffic, speed limit signs were going to be posted. Great Police Department did a fantastic job in doing more monitoring the street. They put up not only having regular offices there to enforce the speed limit, but also having the decoy vehicles as well as the message boards that would, you know, post the speed that the driver was going through. Anyhow, to make the long story short, when the street was striped, we also put in what was called RPMs. Those were those raised pavement markers, or what we also call drunk bumps. But anyhow, because the residents were upset with the noise that vehicles would make as they were going over them, we had them removed and left the street with just the regular stripes. Had it had its effect on slowing traffic down, my opinion, it did. Both the alignment, the enforcement, as well as the, you know, all the other types of issues that were implemented to make the street safer. However, you know, the, the traffic on the street, since I do have a very good vantage point of watching the traffic and what occurs on the street from where I live, and I pay particular attention to it, I found that the truck traffic is usually just vehicles that tend to be service vehicles for residents on the street. Landscapers, contractors, plumbers, electricians, I see them. I also know that our building manager does a yeoman's job in keeping all the vehicles that work at the oceanfront on property, on the oceanfront property. That guy is a magician, how he does it. He does a fantastic job. Getting back to the issues on the street itself, recommendations were always made to put on some type of speed hump, speed table, whatever the case is. And it was rejected, obviously, by the residents. I had suggested at one point in time, even temporary speed tables, something that could be installed, put on the street and removed at a certain rate of time. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Anyhow, I think temporary speed cables are a good solution. It'll reduce this amount of traffic, the speed of the traffic on the street, and it'll also provide some safety for the folks there, especially all those rental people that are there as well, who have no idea as to what's going on because of the traffic issues. Thank you.
Bob Bosso. That's fine.
Okay. Hi, I'm Bob Bosso, and I just have a couple. I'm sorry that I'm a little late to the meeting, so there's probably a lot of stuff that I missed, but I wanted to, I don't know if part of this is, is closing off Mars Way, if that's part of this discussion, or just slowing it down, quieting the traffic. I'm not sure where this is, but if it's a factor, closing down Mars Way, what happens next? Then the residents of Olympus say, hey, wait a minute. You close that road down, we got to close our, we want our road closed down. Now you have the traffic for Mars, if you close it down, ends up on Olympus, and ends up where? On Donald Ross Road, which is already a terrible situation when the season's here and the sun's out and people are going to the beach. It's absolutely awful. And at Donald Ross, it's a very small street from US-1 to Ocean Avenue. We are asking for big trouble if, if that has, and you can bet your life that if, that if Mars gets closed down, Olympus will be next, and then you're going to have all your traffic two miles from here to Donald Ross, and then try to get on Donald Ross and get out. It's going to be a big, big, big issue, and I hope you don't do it.
Thanks for allowing us time. My name is Jeffrey Diskin. I live in Oceanfront, been a resident for going on 25 years. Just a really quick point that I haven't really seen in this area that may help with the speed bump issue, and I see it a lot in Michigan where I live during the summer, is if the speed bumps are causing a noise issue, that's mainly a nighttime issue. And there are temporary travel times that are posted up in Michigan when you can make a left turn, when you can make a right turn with certain hours. So the noise probably isn't as much of an issue during the day, but certainly would be at nighttime. So restricting some of the noise issues at nighttime may help with some of those signs that allow flow only during certain hours. Just a suggestion.
Okay. Real quick, and then I'm ending the comment because we have to move on here.
What I wanted to, on my paper to read, is, has anyone looked at maybe implementing a speed zone from Donald Ross, maybe to Olympus, or even to the juncture where the mobile station is, and implementing a speed zone on US-1 to curb traffic? You know, when you're coming down at 45 miles an hour, it's like, speed zone, you know, 35, and slowing that traffic in. That's it. Thanks.
All right. Closed public comment, and into discussion now. Before, I'm going to let you start, Dee, but I just had one question for Brian. It's a quick one. The decibels on speed tables, speed humps, do you have an idea?
I don't. I apologize. It does depend on the type of speed table and speed hump. The larger ones, which are the speed tables, are 22 feet long, about three and a half inches tall. They have a six-foot kind of incline on both sides and a, and a 12-foot top. Those are obviously less loud than some of the smaller ones, a 12, 14-foot speed humps and then the tiny ones.
It's fine. So, Dee.
I have another engineering question. Regarding pedestrian safety, is there any room at all with the right-of-way on Mars Way to create even a smaller sidewalk? Or so, let's say, taking some of those parking areas and turning them into a pedestrian? Because really, you know, if I have to rank all the problems we have, you know, parking, speeding, trucks, volume, safety should be the number one thing we look at. So for pedestrian safety, do we have any space at all to create a sidewalk on one side of that street?
Good question, and I think you answered, and I think you're on the right track, that it would require there's that parking area that looks like a sidewalk. If that was converted to a sidewalk, that's certainly a possibility. Now, there's engineering design associated with that, ADA compliance and everything else, so it's not necessarily a given that it could work, but what could be done is that be converted to a sidewalk, one or both of those. That is a, you know, there is room, but it'd have to come from that. Otherwise, it would take right-of-way.
And then if, let's say, and I'm going down a path here, just, just in terms of pedestrian safety, just to chip away at that, if that was done, what happens to the parking? Then people just need to park in their own driveways at that point, or?
Correct. I mean, right, they wouldn't be able to park there, or if one side was kept, they would, they could park on that side, but yes.
Okay. And the study that was done, that you did, your team did regarding the queuing, that was done for two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, over two days. Is that statistically relevant, a four-hour span on just two days of the year?
It is, and it was done in peak season during a weekday, and that is really standard engineering practice, and it's something we could go back and do multiple days. But we actually looked at several intersections, four or five intersections, so it starts to become costly to keep collecting counts. And yes, there's going to be a little bit of difference on volume one day versus the next, but three or four trips during the peak hour aren't going to make any substantial difference on the overall conclusion.
And the fact that the county data that was used was from 2020, when we were still in the COVID era, where there may not have been as much traffic then, things got a little quiet for a while. I think the county numbers of the queuing at Donald Ross Road were not the 2021. Anyway, I was just concerned that that might not be inaccurate, you know, that's already going on three and a half, four years, so the volume has changed since those days.
Certainly has changed. I believe that Donald Ross, we would have done them to make sure they were out of what the county considered COVID impact. There was some 2020 counts the county did before, such as in January, February, and they deemed those good, or it would have been, you know, peak season 2022 or something to that effect.
And when you looked at queuing, queuing is just the accumulation of cars in a specific location at a specific time, is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's not, you didn't look at the speed, you didn't really, I mean, there's some volume numbers, but mostly it's the accumulation of vehicles in other locations if that, if that median was to be closed.
Correct. I guess the, the main measurables we looked at are what would be considered queuing, as we just talked about, also vehicle delay, meaning how long are you waiting to make a term now if these changes occurred, and what's considered level of service, which is actually really just based on the delay.
Which change, in your opinion, I'm going to put you on the spot, which modifications or what do you think we could implement that would have the greatest good? You know, you've heard the situation here, you know, we don't want to put a problem on one street in an effect to, in an attempt to help another street. How would you help us solve this in a way that prioritizes safety for the community?
No. Great question, the million-dollar question, right? And I, I'll kind of go back to what I talked about earlier. There are trade-offs. There's not necessarily a perfect solution. When we looked at this back in, you know, 2020, the, our recommendation was speed tables. We believe that is the best solution for, for speeding. It has a measurable impact, and by doing so, that also helps increase safety for pedestrians and bicyclists and everybody else, because people are also going slower on the road, and it may have a little bit of a diversion effect anyway, because people may say, wow, I don't want to go on that road if I can't speed and go real fast, I'm going to go over a, a speed table. So that was always, you know, my recommended solution. I would say I'm more neutral on the closure of US-1 because there's certainly the benefit to, to the Mars Way, but there is a real impact. I don't think there's going to be a huge impact on Donald Ross and US-1. I think, based on our analysis, will there be a little bit? Of course, but I think it's, it's nothing that's going to be substantial, but, you know, you are taking some of that, not all, that would go down to Olympus Drive, and you are impacting, you know, one person's route is another person's, you know, cut-through that claims as a cut-through. So, you know, there's, there's different options to weigh. I will say, I prefer the closure of US-1 median to a one-way. I think the one-way probably has a little bit more negatives associated with it, because if you make it one-way, now you have a large essential road that does allow for speeding. There is the emergency rescue impact, and, you know, people still may go the wrong way down, and you could have another potential safety, especially with the elevation difference in the crest on the road.
Okay. As far as, just one more question. As far as the trucks go, do you have any idea, any knowledge about whether or not if the speed tables or humps are put in? You know, do trucks have any kind of algorithms that, that look at that?
As far as whether they're Google mapping and...
Or yeah, that if a road becomes impassable or difficult for a truck to use?
No, I mean, this, they would still be able to go over a speed hump and want to be a situation that they couldn't, they couldn't travel over.
All right. Thanks. That's all for me for now.
Mary Ann.
You know, I, I heard so many people, and, and I also feel, you know, everybody wants the, wants really what's best for themselves, and I understand that, I do too. And I find it very difficult now to be Salomon, but I want to tell you what I did personally. Once I heard the situation on Mars, and there was in 2021, I decided not to use Mars anymore. And I'm using Donald Ross. I did this for the various reasons. Number one, as a courtesy to the people on Mars, and also for my own safety, because I think 20 feet of width cannot be increased. It's a set limit. And if, to me, I, I feel it's dangerous even for me as a driver in a two-way traffic, because the road is narrowed by the parking cars. I always worry that some kids or animals, I love animals, are coming out and I have to stop. So I think this road is just too narrow for two-way traffic. And if it was a one-way traffic, we would have room for sidewalks, room for parking, and room for a bike path. And of course, you know, Olympus doesn't want that, because how many houses are on Olympus? Three, four? They don't want to be inconvenienced. So I would even suggest, as a gesture, you know, go make Mars Way one-way from Ocean to US-1, and Olympus from US-1 to Ocean Drive. And let's share the burden. Let's not just think, let's not be selfish and just think of oneself, but think of everybody else in the community. Now, I, I think it would even give the people in the condos, they can get out this way. They can even park this way, one-way. So I think it's, it's what I came up with. And of course, I'm always concerned about finding consensus and a compromise. So if somebody else has a better way, I would be gladly agreeing with that person. But I haven't found a better one. Thank you.
I want to, I don't think we need it, do we? Maybe?
I'll consider a little bit.
Yeah. So the workshop is to hear our residents, and I am so happy that we have so many residents here, because, you know, we have residents from Olympus, we have them from Mars, we have people that have, that don't live on either one of those streets, Oceanfront, obviously, but other people that I see here. And this is what is, we appreciate so much, is everyone coming out and actually giving us their voice and their opinions. So I think that's, that's nice to see. This is not, this is a workshop, so this is not a place where council will make a decision tonight, but it was, it was good to hear from everyone. I think that we'll set this probably as an agenda item, and then we can go through, there's, go through some additional information. I've heard new information. I think this town is evolving. It's evolving very quickly, and I think there are things that we have to look at. We have to look at ramifications for everything we do in this town, and that's very, that's vital for all of us. So from that perspective, you know, I look forward to getting it as an agenda item and, and really going through, and, you know, Brian, we'll be meeting with Brian more... And, you know, Brian, we'll be meeting with Brian more individually as council members, and really try to hash some things out with everyone.
We need consensus for that.
Right, yes, you do. We do have to have consensus. But we're not making that decision today either with the workshop. So we can decide the agenda item for sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I was, so, yeah, I was going to say some similar things. We're not making a decision today. It's not really how it works. So I don't want anyone surprised on that. This is a opportunity to get as many people speaking without making a mess of a council meeting, which is complicated already. So, um, and I did want to just add one thing, because Cynthia, I did like, I, I like your idea. But the problem is, we actually don't control that road. And so that really is a, all we can do is ask the county and maybe, maybe. But unfortunately, I, I can't make any kind of promise like that. And I, I would also say probably not super likely, because it's the whole road all the way up and down. So you can't have up, speed ups and speed downs so much, they would probably push back. Although I like your idea and I would be for it, just wanted to say that. I don't have too much else. I, I was just, Brian, when you get an opportunity, if you could get me anything on that decibel stuff, because I do want an idea on that, so I have some numbers and things going forward. Did someone down here wish to speak?
So I guess I'd like to move this forward a little further. Can we, since we have roughly 30 minutes, can council come up with a list of other things that we want to accomplish? If, if this is going to be another agenda item, I want it to be focused, not just on a random discussion, but let's ask our staff and/or our engineer to come back to us with specific things that we want data on, or that we want images or, or something to help guide that next agenda item?
Well, I think it, I think that's pretty much the way we were going regardless, but.
So, so we're going to have speed table? Uh, do we want, if that's going to be a consideration, because it seems to be one of the recommendations? You know, do we want different dimensions? Do we want prices? Do we want an idea of the ideal locations for them, so that the residents would then have something to think about?
I would also, would like, even though I know Brian's not a big fan of it, I would like to know any info you can figure out without him to go too crazy about the one-way stuff. I know it's not easy, but any, any info you can get on that. So we have a real good judgment call, because, yeah, we don't want to create traffic elsewhere, but we would like to have some sort of an idea of what we're dealing with.
Yeah, and, and just to add real quick on that, because I probably didn't completely finish my thought. And it's, sometimes I have to go through each of the details. Fire rescue typically requires a 20-foot road, 20 feet of asphalt. So that's the issue in theory, you know, you can reduce a lane size. But if you're just going to reduce the lane size to have, you know, a stripe with a bike lane or something else, or a shoulder, something like that, people are going to feel very comfortable driving, knowing they don't have opposing traffic in its one way. And it's a wider area, because fire rescue is going to require it. So that was my concern from speeding, is simply because you will have a larger road, even if you do some different striping modifications. And, and so, but yes, I can get you more information on the one-way. Thank you.
So you, I'm not clear on that. Would, could you, so you're saying, what, what are you saying? So that, that, that would preclude having a pedestrian lane, because the fire rescue needs something wider?
We would have to work with fire rescue, but typically fire rescue requires 20 feet of asphalt. That is actually a state scene.
Because I-
It's a good, good question. I'll, I will, I will clarify that. So I believe it's 20 feet, the, we typically do not include curbing gutter. Now, it's a valley gutter there, so you, you can technically drive your wheel on it. But that's not what the road width is. Now, fire rescue will be a little bit lenient when you have something like a, a valley gutter, and they may allow that to count. But regardless, you're not going to necessarily reduce the width of the road from 20 feet to 12 or 14 feet for a one-way. So you may be able to do some striping modifications to allow a bike lane or someone else to walk. But people drive how they're comfortable. If you kind of think about it yourself, if you're on a big wide road, there's no mailboxes, no driveways, nothing else, you tend to drive a little bit faster. When you have friction, so to speak, driveway, mailboxes, other things, you will naturally drive a little slower. That is part of the reason, um, when we put the striping in there, is we were hoping it would kind of confine people to feel, okay, look, you know, you're supposed to stay in this lane. You feel a little less comfortable driving to slow down. So that was part of the reason, and actually came, that, that was actually one of the recommendations, I think, from some other people at that time, too, was, was the striping.
So the other thing with the speed tables is, is temporary speed tables. And I would be open to that. So how would we do that temporarily? And are there certain speed tables that are better for a temporary use? You know, that, that have a decibel level similar to the actual thing?
I'll look up the decibel level. But yes, there are different versions of temporary speed tables. That's actually a common thing, that places put them in.
Thank you. And the other thing I, for a future council item, something we really need to look at that I keep hearing coming up is enforcement. Enforcement of the truck signs, enforcement of the speed limit, that the decoy cars aren't necessarily a deterrent.
Can I chime in on that one real quick?
Please.
In, in the interim, what would be the issue with pulling the deliveries only off the truck signs?
So, did we, did we already do that? Is it already gone? Yeah, I believe we did. The, the one thing, and I, I heard the discussion on the signs. We actually worked with both FDOT and the county on this, the signage assembly. So actually spent some back and forth getting to what they would accept. Because ultimately, those are not the town's roads. US one is a DOT road, Ocean Drive is a county road. So we had to be kind of careful working with them, but we were able to, to pull, I think, that except deliveries, correct?
Except for local, yeah.
Except, excuse me, except for, yeah.
Is it council's pleasure to actually look at parking on one side or resident parking, just on those two streets?
Well, my, my take on the parking is that's a whole nother thing, because I think we're going to have a lot more, because we need to talk about the parking across the board. Because right now, you can technically park on any of these streets over here. And I think that that's a whole nother issue when you have Coretta and Alton and all these companies, these communities getting really big. We're going to have an explosion of people showing up at the beach. And so I think the parking permit thing is a serious discussion, but not for this moment in time.
I would like to just keep this to safety.
But, but I do, I do think one side of the road and the potential for sidewalk, if that's possible, is a good idea to look at for there.
Caitlin, I, I had emailed Caitlin some pictures. Are you able to pull those up real quick? You know, I ride my bicycle all over the place and I was looking at signs. And what I'm seeing, so we'll see if Caitlin can pull them up through her email. We have a, a no truck, a no-through truck sign to the south end of the town, just before you hit the juncture of, you know, with the welcome to Juno Beach sign. So there we have, well, okay, so this is on the, they're a little bit mixed up. Okay, so on the parking issue, so this is on Atlant, on the north and south sides of Atlantic Boulevard, we have no parking anytime sign. So I noticed as I was riding around that various areas along Ocean Drive have no parking signs. And I didn't really 100% know why. So, okay, Caitlin, go to the next one. So that's the north side of Atlantic Boulevard. And there's also no parking on the south side of Atlantic Boulevard. And I'm guessing that's because there's a right of way there. Then on Ocean Drive, just north of Mars Way, by Sydney's Purple House there, there's a no parking, sort of just random no parking. Okay, that's the south side of Atlantic. And what's the next one? Yeah, so then this one, and you can see the Mars Way no truck sign just to the south. This one is Ocean Drive in South Lyra Circle. And I think it's the only no parking sign along Ocean Drive. And it's, again, it's just sort of random. So as I was thinking about parking, we really need some consistency, because I, I started seeing these signs and just wondering why some areas have a no parking sign there. So that, okay, Caitlin, the next. So the, these are just things for council to, to think of. Okay, so this is heading north on Ocean Drive. It says no through trucks. Caitlin, the next. And then on Donald Ross, heading east, this is east of US one, we also have no through trucks. And then we have on Mars Way, we have no through trucks. So technically, if all the trucks were paying attention, we'd be sending the trucks through Olympus Drive, because that's the only street that doesn't have a no through trucks.
Actually, they have to take a right turn at the entrance to Ocean Drive. So that pass through where you just said on the last picture, you, they actually have to come to the stoplight and turn right. That's the appropriate way to do it.
I don't know.
By, by the gas station. No, there is, that, that is where it is. There is no, there is, there isn't a no through truck right there. You have to, they have to stop and turn right, because the no through on the straight shot is to keep them from not going too fast.
But, but I think that, that sign was there before all the speed bumps and, and things were put in at the, at the merge. So I guess my point is, is that we have several, at least three of our five inbound outbound streets have no through truck signs. So where would we potentially be sending those trucks if not through those three streets? We're offloading them onto the other two directions, which is Olympus and northbound?
And, and the no through trucks, and, and I understand the confusion on it, because it, it is confusing. The no through trucks doesn't mean that there can't be trucks on those roads. It means it can't be used as a cut through, through all of Ocean Drive. Meaning if there's a delivery somewhere in Ocean Drive, trucks are allowed to go on Donald Ross Road and, and get there. But they're not allowed to go through that road and then continue on south or wherever, that it's now becoming a, a cut through route, unless I'm mistaken on that, that's my understanding.
That's how the ordinance reads, that's correct.
Yeah, that's how the-
An ordinance created that actually outlines where they can go and the whole nine yards.
Paying attention.
Well, and that is enforcement.
I, I think that that's maybe another part of a, a council discussion. You know, why have an ordinance if nobody's following it? And we're not enforcing it if no tickets have been written, you know?
And it's catching them at the time. So the no parking that you saw on Atlantic, at least those are bike paths used typically, I think, you know, from the Atlantic Boulevard. I live on the street, so that is because the bike path runs through there. So they don't, they don't want parking on that side of the street. And I noticed the same thing on Ocean Drive when you showed the picture.
Just something. So the goal of the next agenda item is to look deeper into some of these solutions?
Right, but I also think at that point, we do have to make a decision.
You know, I, I'm kind of disappointed, because we have been here now one hour and 40 minutes. And when my neighbors will ask me tonight, what did you achieve? Did you come up with a solution? Did you advance a little bit? I, I'm, I will, I will tell them, no, we didn't. We just pushed it out again. We have some more research done. This is the research for today. I could plaster Mars Way with it. And still, it's not enough. We are doing more. I think there has to be a will also for action, not just the will to push it down the road.
So Mary Ann, this is a workshop. We typically don't go to work-
I understand. We did not come up with any new ideas or any new directions or some-
See, I, I would actually counter that we have.
Okay, would you please tell me that? I mean, just give me a synopsis.
I could give you a, for instance, I, I heard today from our, our citizens, I heard different problems and, and concerns that I had never heard before. I didn't know that the community on the west side of US one was experiencing those turn lane issues and volume issues at Donald Ross Road that was causing them to have to go down and make U-turns at, at the Mars Way median. I didn't know that that was a concern for that community. So that's something I'm going to take home and think about. We received emails from residents of the Oceanfront condo with their unique concerns and a history about that road and that parking being made with citizens' taxpayer dollars. And, you know, how, how that plays into what we do. I think that that's a fair summation there. And, and, you know, so we can't just turn each road into a private road or, or private parking, because there's, you know, community money there. So these are, it, it's not, it's leading me to, to things that I need to think further about. And I don't want to make a hasty decision. And I, I don't mean wait another five years to make a decision. But I, I certainly could use another two weeks to speak to some of the residents further, dig deeper into this, talk to staff further.
I, I mean, I, we've already asked Brian to collect some info that we're going to be using to make a final decision here. And I, I don't doubt that we have a final decision at the next council meeting or when the agenda item is coming up, February or here?
Your pleasure.
So, do we want to make a special meeting so as not to make this part of account? Do we want another workshop?
How big's the-
Another workshop.
Well, we, no, 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 we had the-
Call it a workshop, we'll call it, whatever you want to label it.
Caitlin, how big's the agenda right now?
January agenda is large.
It's full. So, so could we make another, just what, whatever you want to call it, a meeting where council gets to review the, review and decide so that it's not part of a regular council agenda, which tends to be-
Saying special, special meeting requests.
A special meeting.
You could do that if you want, but I wouldn't do it, I wouldn't do it in the January, because we have the time to collect the data. So it'd be sometime in February or later.
When is, what is the date on the February meeting, first off? And the week, is that the 20?
Early January?
The February meeting is February 28th.
Okay, so timeframe would have to be the, around the 10th of February, I would think?
Yeah.
How busy is our February agenda, Caitlin, do you know?
I'd, I'd rather not push it off to the end of another month. I, I'd rather have a special meeting where we're not under the gun and under the pressure of the clock to make decisions. I, I don't think that's.
And Brian, you'll have to let us know, or David, you'll have to let us know when you have the information for us. And then we can decide at the end of January.
Yeah, so regarding making a one-way or closing off the median, when I met with the residents of Mars Way, you know, I had said that if we were going to do a test of something, this is the time of year to do the test, because it's the most traffic. Is council open to testing any of these solutions, be it a closure of the Mars Way? And, and really, you know, we don't have to do a pour the concrete kind of thing. There's mechanisms to divert traffic and do a test. Or are any of you open to testing either a one-way or a median closure, just to see what the impact is? For, let's say, 90 days or, or during the rest of the high season and close it? And let's see, then we can really do counts.
I, I'll interject real quick. I know that was a council question. The only thing I want to caveat is closing the US one median is a DOT right away. It's within their jurisdiction. So we'd have to get a permit from them to do that. So I'm not sure if that's something that could, a permit could be set up. We could get a, get a permit and do all that in 90 days.
Do they do permits for tested situations?
Yeah, i- i- in certain circumstances, they've allowed it. Typically, it's a temporary maintenance of traffic type of item. It's something we'd have to discuss. It's not something we've discussed with them. Um, I've seen similar situations where they have allowed it. But once again, I don't know that for sure they would allow it in this situation.
Bring back information.
Yeah, that is something, absolutely, I can-
Testing both scenarios and, and what that would entail. And could you also find out, somebody said that they heard that FDOT would pay for closure of the median. Is that true or false?
And, and I heard directly from that, that's something, they told us that they probably would do. It wasn't a final decision, but it was something that a, um, one of their higher engineers said was a possibility.
And Brian, when you get the traffic studies, it's hard data. You don't do projections, do you, on, on what will happen as Coretta comes in? What will happen when we get additional commercial coming in?
We, we kind of take all that into account. We look at existing traffic, and then if we have projected traffic, we can utilize that stuff we can do too.
Because I think that's all important standpoint.
Just look at queuing. You're not looking at speeds. Or are, is the speed part of that?
We're not projecting speeds. We have, we did the speeding in the past, a couple of years ago. This was simply to see at, you know, the councils and the residents' request, whether the closure of the median would be permissible by the DOT. And the DOT, they're not concerned about speeding on Mars. They're concerned, how does it impact our US one intersection? So speeding's not associated with that.
Okay, if we want to make a special meeting, we kind of have to decide that right now, because we're running up against the clock here. Are we serious about that?
I would like just to add something. I'm looking at you, you came here, you brought up your case. Did you expect the solution or did you expect us to give you concrete ways how to proceed? Are you happy with what we achieved today? Good. Then I'm happy for you and with you.
All right, then on that, I think we need to set up the special meeting, if we're going to do that, Peggy.
Can we actually do that without knowing if, when Brian's going to get the information back? We're going to meet January 24th, so perhaps we can decide at the January 24th meeting.
Lock up the day just in case.
Brian, how much time do you need?
We should lock the day. Yeah, I don't think anything in February is going to be an issue for me. I think, or provided I've had the data available, but as far as getting any of this additional information.
So like the mid, mid February 15th, 18th, something like that?
Correct. I, I think I should be fine.
Are, are we, are we comfortable with like the, the February, the week of the 12th?
Yes.
Just as long as it's not the 14th. Just as long as it's not the fourteenth. I don't want to spend Valentine's Day with news out of my wife.
Fair enough.
What if we do it, I I've got, I might have a conflict that week. What about the twentieth? So everyone good on February twentieth?
Well, we're at the twentieth. We're kind of on top of the the meeting now.
A week away.
There there's not, what's the problem with the following, the previous week?
I might have some conflict, yeah. Some conflict with the dates. You gave, you you said the thirteenth, twelfth?
Well, that, we could do the twelfth, the thirteenth.
The engineer has time to bring the information to us.
We can't do the fifteenth, because that's the food truck night. We could do the sixteenth.
It's a Friday night.
And we can, uh, the twelfth, thirteenth, or sixteenth is what it seems to work. The fourteenth is no good, as Mr. Dias pointed out.
I can do any of those.
Me too.
I can work the either
You want to do it on the sixteenth?
If that works for everybody.
That's the Friday. We can, we can do that if that works. I mean, this is just locking it in. We should have the information, then we should be all set. Uh, should we do the same thing, three to five type thing?
Okay.
That sound good?
Yes.
Okay.
Before we wrap this out, I I, since the council has convened, I have an unrelated matter of regarding the January twenty fourth council meeting. I had spoken to Mike Stahl at Palm Beach County ERM regarding the beach erosion, and he offered to give council a brief presentation at the January twenty fourth meeting. You know, I asked David, but David said we need consensus. Is anybody interested in hearing from Mike Stahl?
I I I am, but now that we, I know that we have a packed schedule, what what constitutes a brief?
I don't know. I guess he would, fifteen minutes? I I don't know what he would present, but it's it's on the beach.
How packed are we?
Very.
Yeah.
So if not
A lot.
So if you prefer, if you prefer an update in February, David can reach out to him and coordinate something.
So Andy is doing the ecology group.
He'd basically do the same presentation.
But the thing is, not all of the town, I don't get the ecology group emails. Our whole town isn't
We also can't discuss, so.
We can't discuss and we can't have public comments.
Maybe, maybe February is, maybe February is right for this, the February meeting.
Have council consensus for a presentation in February by our, on erosion.
I think we're good with that, correct? Everyone?
Time.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all.
All right, then we are adjourned.